Chief dog somewhere.
He's ready to go.
All righty, do you mind at least the application?
Father God, we thank you and we praise you for today, Lord. We thank you and praise you for those opportunities that we have, oh God. We thank you, oh God, for just you being God. Lord, we pray that you will bless this meeting. We pray, oh God, that we will have clear minds, that we will just do what is best in the interest of our citizens, oh God. Heavenly Father, we just thank you, we praise you, and we give you glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Item one, consider resolution to accept funds from a 2019 HIDA grant. Chief.
HIDA is the high intensity drug trafficking area. We've been involved in this grant for several years. Basically, what it does is pay for a vehicle and overtime for our officer that is assigned to DEA. They'll pay for those expenses.
Is there any matching?
There's no matching.
Everybody good? Item two, consider resolution to apply and accept and amend appropriate funds from Project Safe Neighborhoods.
Project Safe Neighborhood is a grant that we applied or that we're going to apply for, and we're asking for $150,000. There is no cash match to this, there is no match. What we want to do with the funds is we want to allocate $100,000 of that for equipment, would be more software to track our violent offenders in our neighborhoods, some surveillance equipment, $40,000 for overtime to pay for overtime, and $10,000 to help facilitate meetings with community members, particularly in those neighborhoods that are impacted the most by violent crime. So...
I'm sorry, I don't want that to be lost on the council. What we're talking about is going directly to the neighborhoods, establishing good working relationships with those folks.
And what we've discovered through my career is I don't really like these meetings where you have a panel and there's an audience. I like sitting down face to face with people and discussing what's, you know, issues. I think that's much more beneficial, and that those are the type of meetings that we're that we hope to facilitate with some of these funds.
Which grant?
This grant is specifically used to target violent crime.
Everybody good with it? Okay, item consider resolution to apply for, accept and amend appropriate funds from Bureau of Justice.
We've also been involved with this grant for several years. This is basically the Bulletproof Vest Grant Program. The total of grant would be $49,730. Of that, $24,865 would be matched from the city. And this goes to provide vests for our officers. Remember the vests, have a five-year life, after five years there, the sweat, the heat, the fibers no longer will be guaranteed to stop.
Can you do anything with us?
It's funny that you ask that. There's two, there's a, what you, what we normally do is have them shredded, and there's a cost involved with that. But the Texas Rangers have approached us, and they want to take the old vests and use them just as a ballistic backstop for some of their ballistic testing. So actually, it's a win-win. They get that, they get the old vests, and we get rid of the vests without any cost.
Yeah, he wants to save the older ones.
The twenty-year-old one to see how they were cut.
The real sweaty one.
Yes.
That's it, thanks Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks Chief. Item four, consider purchase of a strike truck.
Counsel Mr. Mayor, this is an item as scheduled or budgeted purchase for one strike truck from Rush Truck Center in Odessa. This is a traffic unit that's going to be replaced. The total purchase price is $394,689, and the unit being replaced is nine years old.
Okay, any questions? Okay, item five, consider award for the bid to sell city property located at 417 North Grant.
Counsel Mr. Mayor, on March 19th, Mr. John Harris presented to the council for the sale of 417 North Grant. It was the direction of council that we wait until he has closed on the property before the sale is made. He has closed on the property, and he's providing a copy of that sales agreement and contract to us. So at this point, we'd like to approve the bid that he put in of $50,000 and allow the city manager to execute any needed documents.
So there's no other restrictions except that he bought the Rose Building? There's no requirement that he do with it what he said he was going to do, or that he doesn't just flip it or anything?
Sure, so within the contract, he has to own the facility for at least one year, and he has to begin construction within three months.
Okay.
And it's utilizing the plan that he provided to council. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any questions? I'm going to move item six down to the bottom. So, item seven, short-term occupancy tax. Mr. Mayor.
This is to give you an update on that sports complex legislation we had, and there were some developments.
I'm sorry, occupancy tax. The Airbnb.
Airbnb.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going to Austin tonight, dress together.
Yes. On the Airbnb, we're developing a draft of that ordinance. There are several cities that have done that. We've talked with the Hotel Motel Association, the same man, Scott Chosla, came to Odessa last year, also with TML. And so we will be ready to present a working draft of that at the next briefing session that you're ready to present. There is a way for cities to regulate that, and we can show you what other cities have done about Odessa.
So do Airbnbs have to register with the municipality?
We would actually regulate them because they are providing a service, and so we're kind of on the same side with the Hotel Motel Association on this because they're regulated, so they don't mind helping us get everybody...
Put them in the disadvantage of the Airbnb.
And it's a safety issue.
Well, in the amount of money, Midland ran a tackle about how much revenues were being made from people, Airbnbs, and it was huge. It was a significant amount of money.
So do we know, do we have people renting Airbnbs in Odessa?
I think Gary's team did a search on several of those sites, and there were a couple hundred.
We'll have some background information.
Now, the other thing with that is that we do get complaints from, you guys here too, why are there people in and out of that house? And that's why.
Right. I've had some people tell me that they moved in with their friends so they could move and rent out their houses to the old...
Well, that's a good friend. So, yeah, you can move in for $2,000 a month.
Yeah. All righty, any questions on that? How to make voluntary annexations.
Update on the annexation. You remember when we had the work session of all back, there were three small, one-owner voluntary requests where we actually had to sign petition from the owner asking to be annexed. But, and when we had that presentation, it sounded to me like the consensus of the council was that we wanted to bring planning back to be more involved in that. So what we've, we've got Randy here tonight. What our plan, unless you tell us differently tonight, is we'll move forward with these three voluntary annexations and possibly some additional roadway annexations like we did last time. Randy would bring those through the Planning and Zoning Commission, they would have a hearing on it, review it, and then following that, present that to the city council. And so this is kind of the transfer of the going forward responsibility on that from legal to planning. Legal's still going to be involved in doing the paperwork, and utilities and public works have to be involved, kind of switch back to a way it was some years ago with planning being kind of the presenter and the main contact person. And since most of these that we're doing right now are industrial development districts or they're entities that are building things, it's really working better for them because Randy's department really is the place where you can kind of get building inspections and public works and everything kind of pulled together, also with what Sylvia's trying to help us with.
And so have, do you all have it in place now on notifying the county when there's a annexation proposal?
Yes, yes, and these three, Natasha and the city attorney's office has already talked about it a month or longer ago with the county attorney. And that'll be our official contact level. When we find out about it, we'll share it with the county attorney, and then it'll be up to him to share that appropriately with the county.
Other question? Okay, number nine, 2020 census funding.
Yes, Counsel, you recall several meetings ago, we had the census come in and talk to us about them getting geared up for their process. We've begun to have more meetings with the census folks. We're in the process of establishing what's called a Complete Count Committee. That is comprised of local, that'll be a local effort, if you will, it'll be nonprofit agencies, it'll be the education sector, the business sector, all of those that we think we can help get the word out about the census. We're partnering with the county. We recognize that the county's going to have a struggle simply because it's just a lot harder to count out there. But what I'm, what I would want to discuss with you today is, at that time when the gentleman came in, we talked about, at some point, they would want some financial participation by the city. And I wanted to discuss what that amount might be. I will tell you that the city of Midland, based on my conversation with their city manager, will be contributing to about $40,000. I would recommend that we contribute at that same level. And the money would come from probably at the excess sales tax.
I think so.
You think it's enough?
I had $50,000 in my mind for some reason. Did they throw that out?
Well, I think that was a number that I...
Did you throw it out and say someone said $50,000?
I think we've got to at least admit to do what Midland's going to do, which is...
Oh, I don't disagree, but my question is, is for five or $10,000 more, we may fund another 300 people, which is a huge...
Counselment Brian, I believe also the same group that's presenting to us for the census, they're going to be approaching the school district, the county, other taxing entities to also get participation.
Well, we know the county won't give...
Well, maybe if we had a meeting with them.
We could give 40 and then give another 10 and honor it.
I would recommend not, not... Where's that best?
So the marketing, I mean, the money would be used for marketing material to really expand the outreach, it'd be TV, radio, it would be marketing both English and Spanish. It, I think the census has the people that would ultimately go out and do the follow-up.
They do, they pay $25 an hour.
How much?
When they start.
Yeah.
$25.
That's why we can't hire people.
Because they're all working for the census.
Yeah, Mary, Mary and I may have to go to work, pay our taxes. Have they, have they been giving you some updates on, are they going to plan like little satellite areas set up at different locations to try to do census?
Yes, I think part of the, kind of the overall plan is to identify events that they could attend, so they can, they can begin the work of talking to individuals. They're currently working on identifying nonprofit groups who might be able to participate in other activities. So, yes, a lot of that work is currently going on right now as we speak. They've also hired local people. They've got a coordinator, and I think they're in the process of hiring some additional folks to begin that work on the, from the census side. They're just looking now for the, establishing the local partnerships to help.
I mean, just in my opinion, I recommend going with 50. Advertising in this market is so totally different than advertising anywhere else. Everybody's competing for everything. I've, because we spend about 1.2 million, Subway does a little bit, and it's costing more and more just to get the, in advertising, you have to get it past what they call the noise level, which is what we hear all the time. You, your truck, you hear a commercial there, you sit from the TV, you hear another commercial there, and you have to get enough repetition to actually hear it, and that's going to cost some extra money.
I think we ought to commit more than Midland, just before we let them know that we committed more than them. Why don't we have to match the...
Get you some numbers, huh?
And you said 50.
I know, but he's going to... I didn't throw in the...
Okay, I think 50's good. That's what I said, that when they were here, I wrote that down. That's what I've always thought we probably would do.
We will prepare in the gym night and reflect that.
That doesn't happen very often, does it? You asked for 40 and you got 50.
You don't have to spend the dollars. This is a psychological, it's the federal government.
I'm a little freaked out right now.
All right, item number six, discuss workforce housing. Ms. Renee.
Wow!
Actually, actually, Gary and I talked about putting this, Gary's going to talk about a matrix, but I wanted to bring this back up because I know that the council has made some decisions. You've established the $5 million, but you also chose not to proceed with the establishment of the house. So I think from our perspective and staff's perspective, we get a lot of questions about what is, what is the plan. So we wanted to talk about, again, we wanted to understand what the council wanted to do moving forward, and I think also Renee will add some commentary as to what the chamber thinks, how it can help, and I think Gary was going to talk about a matrix, correct?
I have just a small piece of it. The follow-up on the $5 million that we said we wanted to go through the same process, go through the compliance committee, then ODC. Well, in order for that to work, we need some guidelines to give to the compliance committee because they have what we call the matrix of charge when they're talking about how much money they give to entities for building something or for creating jobs. So, again, using the Chamber of Commerce, legal, we'll develop a draft, matrix number two, for how to spend the $5 million for housing process needs. And then we'll develop probably a matrix number three for how to spend money on actual housing projects involving nonprofit or other entities that may be doing services for them. So just on that one piece of how, how we're going to go through the process of taking projects to get approved for funding, we're working on that using our Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Department with input from legal, and then we'll present that to ODC through the compliance committee, to ODC, and then ultimately to the city council. But on the other part about who and what the structure is...
So it'll basically follow just like ODC does now with any project. And Wes is out of town, so I am filling in for him today. It will go through compliance like it does now, it will go to ODC, and then for you all for final approval. So same, same process. I know that Gary has worked on some information, Wes has some information from some other communities who have done this, so they're working together, and I think ODC will see something on Thursday.
Well, we'll probably just get an update because I don't, it would be nice to have a draft by then, but I doubt it.
Okay. And then that, so same process as any...
So, so the objective is, like now, on the matrix that we use for businesses, it's primarily related to either infrastructure or the number of jobs created. So I guess you're going to, you're going to come up with something for us to look at for a matrix for this, but since this is so new, I personally would hate for us to get, I think we need some guidelines, but I think we ought to reserve the right to do something else if something came. We don't really know how creative people are going to be and what opportunity there is, so I don't know that we know enough to say if you're going to, I guess we know enough to say if you're going to spend so much, or if you, if this is going to be for workforce housing, you know, those kinds of things, requirements. But I would sort of hate to see us get locked into something on the front end of this. We could certainly need to have some guidelines, but I just think we ought to reserve the right to say, you know what, this doesn't fit this matrix, because we've done that on compliance. There've been some projects...
I think we're all on the same page with you. We're talking about just rough guidelines that are a starting point, that are kind of restating the reasons why we want that. So some of the, some of the emphasis on reasonably priced on workforce housing, on some emphasis for government workers, some emphasis, and that it has to go through this review, but it'll have a big asterisk at the bottom saying, but we are looking for creative ways to do it.
Because I think what we said was we wanted to dedicate $5 million from ODC for housing...
Reasonably priced workforce housing. And I think it looked from a $40,000 to $60,000 price of salary.
And that could be for, you know, helping a, I don't know, I mean, there's, I think we ought to push the envelope as far as we can.
Yes.
And see if it works, and if we get slapped, we'll blame Michael.
No, that, that actually helps because we, we've already been approached by some potential projects and not understanding that the council, whether or not you guys have some limitations or it sounds like, you want to be free to entertain just about anything if it makes sense.
Absolutely.
But help solve the problem.
Absolutely.
And help solve it in a speedy manner.
Yes.
Time egg and go, nothing happens.
We do not want to be a bureaucratic group that keeps anything from happening. We'd rather look at anything, right?
And that money is so hard to find a place to use, and we've got so much of it, we need to spend it where we can get it to where it's best, period and story.
And I'll update you just a little bit. So we had our chamber board retreat a couple of weeks ago, and one of the discussions, well, we talked about transportation, education, all of the issues that we're facing, and of course, housing came up, and talking about how it's a community issue, knowing the school district. All of the taxing entities were present with the exception of medical center, but all of the entities have told us they're having a difficult time getting workers here because of the cost of living and having to pay the rent or buy homes. So it's definitely a community issue, and not only with the workers from a taxing entity, but also service, you know, the restaurants, and, and those people are having a really difficult time trying to keep the hospitality and service industry. You can go to any restaurant, and there's a long wait with a section closed because they don't have, have workers. So again, a community issue, and our thought, our chamber board thought, and it was discussion only because we didn't have a quorum, we will meet the 20th of May with our executive committee, was to really, and I've, I've heard several terms, marshal, coordinator, just a person to work with all of the entities, and that's not just taxing entities, but developers, anyone who has an idea to try to help solve this problem. We don't see it as a long term, but it could be three years, it could be five years. Hopefully, in three years, we've made great strides. We've talked about possibly funding it through, we do have some reserves with the chamber, and when I say chamber, the chamber is broken into three departments. So we have Convention and Visitors Bureau that you all fund through hotel motel tax, and we have Economic Development that is funded through sales tax. Our Operations Department is funded through membership and events, and so we've talked about funding it that way, so it's not being funded by any public dollars. Of course, we would always go out, you know, if someone's willing to fund it with public dollars, that would be great, but we know that, you know, that might not, we do feel like there might be some groups, maybe Grow Odessa, some others, who might be willing to pitch in. But we feel like that it's a responsibility of the chamber as a quality of life issue, and it touches all of the elements that we work on, that we should, you know, help with the issue. And I know the city is slammed with staff issues, and Michael and I have talked about getting help from him on developing a job description, and that's really kind of where it bogs down with us at this point. Our executive committee wants to really look at it and not make a haste decision, make sure we're getting the right type person, you know, what are the needs, what are the skill sets that they need? And this would work with everyone. So it's kind of, that's, that's where we are right now. I hate to even bring that up because it has not gone to a vote with our board, but Michael just asked me to give an update. I know, again, every entity is facing problems, and every entity has someone who's working on some housing issues. You all have departments that work on that. The school district has recruiting staff that are out trying to get people here, and they're having to do some housing work as well. So this person would try to help everyone in trying to just bring that all under one umbrella, but it would take, you know, work from all of us to help get that done.
Let me ask you this, and, and this is just throwing this out. You know, my initial thought on the person that would oversee was that it would be someone at the city of Odessa, simply because of the needs, you know, like if they're talking planning, you know, zoning, building inspection, housing, you know, those people that have, that already have those areas of expertise...
Sure, knowledge.
Are internal here. And so I think my initial thought was that, you know, that position would be a city of Odessa. But I'm not saying that I'm opposed to, to the chamber.
Sure, and we had lots of discussion with that.
And so, so with the chamber, and if this person is housed with the chamber, how do y'all, how do y'all exercise those areas without, you know, my concern would be having someone that would go out and, oh, yeah, yeah, come, and we're going to build this multifamily over here, or we're going to put in a quadplex or whatever, and you get all this ball rolling. Well, it's not zoned, you know, properly, or, you know...
I think, I think communication will be key for whoever, whoever the person is and wherever they're housed. I think part of the issue has been, you know, it didn't get here overnight, and there's been lots of groups working on different things, and that's how it all kind of started, is there were so many conversations taking place, and that's where we said, well, let's get everybody in the same room and start, you know, sharing our information. I think that this person, whoever it would be, wherever they would be, it would be vital for them to be able to work with all of the city departments, because the city, you're right, that is, this is where it starts. So I think that would be very important. And when Michael and I talked, and even with Mayor Turner, the staffing issue has really been the big, big thing, is there are so many spots in the city that aren't filled now in trying to recruit that person. And, you know, we're still really not absolutely sure what that person looks like or will do.
One of the concerns that was put forward was when we did, we said, you know, we want ODC to allocate the money, but we don't want them to take the responsibility.
Right.
And especially with what happened that night, I'm, I'm right there with you. You saw Ted, you saw Betsy. Betsy has done a lot, organized committees, things like that. I think those are great resources, and I think we should continue to use those committees because you have people that have stepped forward, especially with infill housing, and say, I'll do all the title work. I'll search everything you need to do. I'll put somebody in my company on doing it to help out, and I think that's a great resource. That's not Randy and his people doing it. That's a title company, somebody volunteering. You've also got other people that have volunteered, and I think there's a lot of strength in that. And one committee I said you may want to add is a land community. De'Aaron Horton is getting to the end of the run. The Hertz say they're not going to sell any more land outside the Loop. It's a family dynamic issue. Okay, if DR gets to the end of theirs, where else can it go? And that's something that people need to be looking at, saying, okay, maybe this piece of land, or this piece of land, or if Beaton Bow gets to the end of their string, they're looking at more land to acquire now to continue, but if it's not there, we need to be looking at other places. Because that could be the worst, is when they get there and they don't have any more.
You know, I initially had thought, you know, probably the city was the, the main group, and then I realized that it really, it's probably not even healthy for the city to be the main group. The city is a major player, as is Odessa Finance Corporation, as our developers, as, you know, and, and it occurred to me that what this project needs is somebody that is a facilitator, that's what I call it, is a facilitator, because there needs to be somebody that is an advocate for this group, that if something is stuck in P and Z and it hasn't moved for two months, there needs to be a person that can go down and say to Randy, look Randy, I know you're covered up, you know, but all these things are what, you know, that person that understands all the limitations, but also has influence and can help make things happen. And so I really think that it, that, that, and I, I do have a person in mind, and I know it has to go through a process, but, but I really believe that the chamber housing this and, and a person working out of there simply because they're accessible and, you know, there's a lot of resources there, and like you said, like the mayor's time act, you know, there's somebody that might say, I'll do that title work, and this facilitator can call somebody and can call a Mike Withrow, you know, or an Ogilvy and say, hey, we could get this, this would go faster if somebody would put this in front. That's the kind of thing that we need a person doing. I personally don't think it's a volunteer person. I think we want to hold this person... I think we wanna hold this person responsible, but we wanna hold them accountable, so we need to pay them. But, but if, if we think of that as this group and that person as being the facilitator of making, of helping people make things happen, to me, it all just sort of falls into place. Because we don't know what all those things are gonna be. We don't know what kind of projects are gonna come. And so it needs to be somebody that's been around the block, that understands the politics of Odessa, that understands banking, that understands land, you know, I mean, it's a big tall order. But there are a lot of people that are willing to help on a volunteer basis. We just need somebody that is the facilitator and that it's their, his or her responsibility.
It really is a big job description, and I think we're gonna have to, you know, tone it down a little bit to, to see what, what's possible. I think it is vital for you all as a council and the city to, to have a big voice in that and to take an active role. Dewey and I have talked about this many times, and I'll be honest, Dieter, I have gone back and forth on it. One day I wake up and think, yes, we need to do that. And then I wake up and think, oh, I just don't know if we need to do that. Because it is a big job, and obviously we're taking, you know, that responsibility. I think that, and Dewey and I have talked about this, Dewey has banking experience and he has.
You're hired.
Real estate. And he has, I mean, I, I do think, just from the discussions that I've heard back and forth with people talking, I do think it's important for you all to take a, a leadership role in showing that, you know, this is important, it's, it's the number one issue in town right now, and it will remain to be until we get some of these houses built and can house employees. But, you know, maybe he, he represents you all on whatever group this is, or committee, or whatever we're calling it. I think it's very important for that person to be able to call someone up and, and get something done quickly. And, you know, you hear both sides of it, and there's always, it's kind of in the middle. And for that person to just be able to bring them to the table and, and say, okay, let's just really find out what the, the, the true issue is that's stopping us and, and move it forward. And I would absolutely agree it needs, it needs to be paid, because it is, it will be a full-time job.
You know, and, and my only concern, and they're still my concerns, is that there's, that individual has got to be somebody that's very familiar. And, and the other part about that concerns me is the time we've gotten now to the time that we find somebody. For instance, you know, Bernardine Spears, they have six million dollars that they're about to have to refinance of their, of their money. Can that money be used for Jill? Who's gonna take that ball and run with it? If they're not knowledgeable about it, then we're gonna wait for this person to come. That's the only, only thing I have that's just, you know, and then the, the property over here that we're looking at, you know, who's gonna be able to, we, we've got, I guess, I, I have no patience, you know, you could ask anybody I work for. I have no patience whatsoever, I want it done now. And it just, I just get so irritated when we have opportunities, but we just keep, keep it, kicking it, the ball fair, kicking it down the road.
And I think there's things we can be doing now, although we don't have that person hired, you know, there's people calling all the time, people are anxious. You know, one thing that, that I think the chamber's really good about is bringing people to the table and getting volunteers involved. And we've had so many people say, well, you know, when are we gonna start working on that, or can I help in this area? And so we're kind of losing, we're burning daylight really from not moving on it, so.
Well, what if we hired somebody to just come in right now to help find a longer-term person if this person wasn't able to do it? I mean, there is a very qualified person that in this town that has been on Housing Finance Authority, is a retired banker, has been in business, has been on several boards, has been on ODC Finance, and, you know, and, and understands people who I think would be willing, if not to take it on, I don't know that he'd make a three-year commitment at all, but he has said he would help get this thing going. And so maybe, and it's, I'm gonna tell you who it is, because I've asked his permission to do that, it's David Butten. And he's retired, he said, I didn't retire so I could go take another job. I said, I know, but politically, you understand who the players are. I mean, somebody, either him or somebody like him locally, that could step into this right now with the idea of finding maybe a long-term person. So we could get things going and.
That's a good idea. And he might, he might agree to do it on a short-term.
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't, looking for a three-year job.
Somebody didn't call Gus and say, get your guys out here to get us any later.
Yeah.
Or call Atmos and be able to say.
And Gus is gonna take his call, you know, and if he doesn't, Doug is gonna go out there and say, hey Gus, look, I'll buy you lunch if you'll get this, you know, that, but that's the kind of things. And I, you know, I, I think that, that someone, him or someone like him, who is a pretty, you know, he's lived in Odessa all his life, that knows people and can pick up a phone and get in, is the kind of person we need. But yeah, he, he said, when we talked to him about, he said, I'm not looking for a long-term job, I'm not, I didn't retire so I could go get another one. But he loves Odessa so much that I think he would be someone that would be willing to be at least an interim person.
And I think it's that love for Odessa that these other companies have come up and said, we'll help you do this, or we'll volunteer to do this, because they see such a need.
But that's huge, that's saving a ton of money up there.
So.
Well, the bigger, you know, one of the biggest hurdles is, is again, is, is our operations, which you're looking over, you know, and I think it is a hurdle. It's, it's something that, that might be, and thank goodness you're here to look at through all of it, because there's so many. We do have to be careful, because we do have labanites coming in, you know? And, and we have to be very careful with who is doing what, but then we do have others that are, that are companies that are in here, they love the city, just like you're talking about, and maybe we can get them a little bit bigger green light.
Yes.
And Michael, if I may.
Yes. I'm looking at him.
Is this Sylvia?
Yes. Oh, Sylvia, you, we've heard a lot about you.
Thanks. We have a meeting set up for the twenty-third, and just today during the plating conference had some, some hurdles sort of present themselves, what, what the code says, especially when it's a sort of city-sponsored project, and what needs to happen and how fast it needs to happen. You know, I know everybody beats up on Austin, but Austin has a volume builder program where you can get a hundred and fifty permits at one time. City of San Antonio has a, a program even more so than that, where it's at your own risk. You're, you're going vertical as you're going horizontal, right? So there, we're not even in the, Odessa's not even in the top ten fastest growing communities in the state. So other communities have figured this out. We, we can figure it out, it is not, it is not a, a crazy puzzle to solve. It's gonna take some council courage, it's gonna take some community tolerance and, and, you know, finding that soft spot in between. But for those builders who are from here and who do do a good job, there's, there's methods to let them go faster. The guys that don't normally work here, well, you know what, they've gotta put up some fiscal, well, they've gotta put up some, some fiscal backing to, to let them do that. So I, 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 you know, you're in an enviable position as a city that, I, I said today to some developers, the ordinances are not your problem, because you couldn't ask for a better set of codes than what Odessa has in terms of ease of going vertical. You couldn't. You don't have restrictive tree preservation historic, you don't have, you know, environmental concerns, you don't have a whole lot of that. What you do have is an inundation of an already overwhelmed system. And I think there's some things we can put in place to grease that wheel a little faster. And so I've been talking to the city manager with that, he's very receptive and, and, you know, I just need to hear from the other side of the table what, what the issues are, and we've set that meeting up. I think I got twenty-five RSVPs in the first fifteen minutes of the.
They're people one of them. Yeah, that's right.
Of, of the invitation, so I'm, I'm hopeful that there's some quick wins we can do to get, to get things going.
This, this meeting that you're gonna have, is it with strictly developers, or is it with other?
Developers and contractors.
It's a mix.
Correct.
It's a mix.
Can I come?
Yes.
Can I come?
Yes.
I'm looking at the city manager, that, that is entirely up to that.
I'd like to be there, if at all possible, just to.
Support you.
To support you, exactly. That's, that's what I'm there for.
Well, I mean, I think we recognize we're gonna get both good and bad.
Thank you.
I, I, you know, as city manager, we, I mentioned last time, that's my biggest pressure point is development. How do I balance the need to get projects on the, on the ground fast, at the same time ensuring that the projects are done in a manner and in a fashion that are gonna last?
Exactly.
How do we get developers to understand that their development is not simply impacting just them, but has broader impacts? And how do we get our own staff to stop thinking, start thinking, what is it that we can cut out, what do we absolutely need to have, and how can we make things move faster? And I think that's where Sylvia's gonna be very integral in that, as well as Philip and I, making sure that our staff is hearing what we're saying and opening up a little bit more.
And we need each of the tools you need.
Well, and we want Odessa to be the city to do business, you know, for many, many, many decades, we had that reputation, things were easier to do here. And of course, we've had a lot of growth. But that's what, we want to welcome people, we have a wonderful opportunity where people are coming in right now, and they can choose a lot of other cities around us, and we want them to choose Odessa for the service they receive and for the ease of service. Because again, if, if it's too hard for them, they can just, you know, go down the street, and we want them to come here.
Midland has just incentivized housing under a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. They're giving a nine thousand dollar rebate per single-family residential.
So there's one of those incentives for.
Can every part of the five million?
Yes. Yes.
I mean, that's why I'm saying, let's bring it up there.
Maybe we have it.
Let's make it ten thousand. Let's go.
You know, if you want something done in here, you just have to sign Midland's.
All the presentations, his account, Midland's doing this. Okay, I'll be here.
Well, your property value per acre here is definitely a lot higher, which, which, you know, I've been on the, on the other side, I was on, in the finance industry for a long time, and I, I say this to the staff, the interest monster is always hungry, right? The developer just wants to get it out, they just wanna do it. But, you know, staff being the fabulous steward that they are, really want it done right.
Yeah. It's a tough balance.
Yeah.
Please let me know anything, any questions you have, suggestions, please, please let me know. Thank you all.
Thank you, Renee.